We'll call the meeting over. For that, we'll look for a roll call.
Hey, Mayor Menne.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
All right, perfect. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve. Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. For approval of minutes of the previous meeting. January 3rd, 2017.
So, vote second.
Have a correction? Have a correction?
For your department report, I did abstain in that vote.
The substitute motion to approve January 3rd city council meeting minutes with the change under the fire department report to have noted that Mr. Brennaman abstained.
Second. Motion second, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll look for motion to approve the bills submitted.
Before you do that, there was a change. There was a sheet of paper put in front of you. There was one bill that had, it was kind of a duplicate issue and we found out today and called the company. So, we took off the amount that was not due to them. So, the bill is actually smaller. So, the original bills that we sent to, it's on the Omni, Omni site. The original bill that was submitted to you is incorrect and I redid that bill and that's the one that's sitting in front of you. So, I would ask that that be changed in the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills with the change indicated for Omni site.
Second. Further discussion?
I have some questions.
Come.
Craig, we have, I think I asked this question before, but I don't remember the answer. We had $23 worth of gas usage at the pool?
I think that's gonna be a fee that, so don't shut it off, just use.
I'm gonna say it's a minimum.
It's like a minimum.
So, that'll be all winter long, we're not using the pool.
The second question I have. $187 November penalty for the South Dakota retirement system?
That is correct.
What do we get penalized for?
Apparently, they didn't get the check before the 15th that got to them, the week after.
So, there's a $187 penalty?
We've never had that issue before, but we called them on it and asked what the procedure was and they pointed out a state statute that.
So, why didn't they get the check?
Because usually in my processes, I do that during like the second week of the month. It's an end of month process. I usually do that after the payroll end of month and it's part of, it's part of the payroll end of month. And that's usually done after my other end of month procedures. And so, we decided to change it so that I actually change that part of the end of month and put that as part of my end of payroll. So, that it actually gets done at the end of, the last pay period of the month instead of the end of the month. So, then the check gets there at an earlier time. That's how the procedure has always been, we've never had an issue.
Where's that gonna go?
There soon enough, it was after the 15th.
Is that gotta go up here?
Yeah.
It's there, okay. All right, third question for Craig. What is a BX-50 strong arm for $1,500?
That is what we want our vacuum. We have 52,000 set aside for it, but we had to keep it below 50,000 for South Dakota midlands. So, this was an add-on that we put on afterwards.
After the vacuum?
Yeah.
What exactly is a strong arm?
It's the arm that swings on, that holds vacuum up. Because it's got three or four controls or whatever. So, hold it up above your head so you can keep it up the whole time.
So, any questions?
Four more $1,500 questions, sorry. I'm going to add something else. South Dakota propane agriculture. I'm sure that's been reported before and I just noticed it for a permit. For wastewater discharge.
That's the, that's the earlier.
I figured it was much.
For wastewater discharge permit. So, that we can discharge that wastewater in the, in the, for some reason. It's a permit that they, ours is past due for about a year now because D and R is way behind with them, so. Two bulbs is like three years old under us. We're still paying the fees for it, but like that, we say getting permits, like for working off our old permits.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Questions? Call the vote? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan? All right. So, we have hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. Like 705 public hearing. The application for a beer and wine license, BW license for Stomping Grounds Incorporated, to allow on-off sale of malt beverages and South Dakota farm wines.
Justin Knight submitted this application in his building up on Highway 38. He's gonna put in a coffee sandwich shop. As part of that, he wants to be able to sell malt beverages and South Dakota wine. So, he applied for this BW license which would allow him to do both those. We're not limited by the number of malt beverage licenses. We give up just liquor license, so we can approve this if we see that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a question, is he restricted then to South Dakota farm wines?
Yes, he is.
Or can he sell any wine?
No, he's gotta have South Dakota wines. This license restricts it. Now, they do have a different wine license where he could sell any kind of wine, but, and we talked about it and he just wants to stick with the South Dakota wines and get those wines.
So, there's two different classifications within what we can approve or not.
Yep, two different licenses.
Just out of curiosity, does Craig, if you wanted to sell all wines, does that limit it? Does that license limit it?
Yeah.
If you wanted to sell all wines? If you got the proper license for it, yes, then you could sell any kind of wine, whether.
But, I mean, he could apply for that and.
Yeah, he'd have to apply for that other license.
Okay.
He couldn't sell it under the BW license.
It's not limited like the liquor license.
Like the liquor license, yeah.
Yes, malt is not limited.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Huh? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Carries? All right. We've got second reading. We've got a couple different ones here. One, two, three, four of them. No changes from last meeting, if you were here for last meeting. But, second reading of ordinance 634, the 2015 International Residential Code.
Make motion to approve, second reading of ordinance 634?
Second. All right, any discussion? Call the vote? Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
We have the second reading of ordinance 635, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code.
Make motion to approve ordinance 635 Maintenance Code.
Second. Discussion? Jones?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Brennaman?
Yes.
We have the second reading of ordinance 636, 2015 International Existing Building Code. Make a motion to approve ordinance 636. Discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
And the last one, second reading, reading of ordinance 637, 2015 International Building Code. So, vote second. Discussion? Call the vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan? Keel. Then, I forgot this a little bit, we have resolution 2017-1, the general assessment policy, which was discussed at our last council meeting.
And in your pack now, this resolution. Like I said, this is our general assessment policy. We talked about it at our last meeting, which says the, what if we issued a special assessment on a street project or whatnot, what the charge would be per linear foot? We used to have $80 a linear foot, but it was agreed upon by the council, changed that to 100. So, the only change in wording I've done to this is just changed that $80 amount to $100. Otherwise, all of the wording stays the same as we have.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2017-1. I second that.
Any discussion?
Apparently, I've, the primary reason for that was just the cost share. Mitch was, was pretty much average, and, and I don't expect you to know the answer to this question, but I could've asked at the last meeting. Compared to surrounding communities, where is it, $100 above beyond average goal?
I think it really depends on the community and the project they're doing. Several of them assessed the whole price of the project per foot against it, you know. We kind of started off with this policy way back when in a market test of this. We kind of set a lower dollar amount to try and get streets redone, to get people to submit petitions, you know. So, we started off at the 4950 and then I think in 2013 or whatever, or 15, maybe it was, we did 13, what it had to be, we changed it to the $80 a foot just because the cost of, you know, constructing this street had gone up so much more. And then now, Mitch had, you know, presented at the last meeting, $100 still doesn't do it, but it gets us closer into, you know, more of a cost share.
May I serve me, it was, this is, it can be, can be waived upon petition in agreement at the city council. That verbiage is in here, is that correct? Or is that a flat straight across the wording?
It was a cap, it said up as a cap.
Yeah. It says not to exceed $100 and we talked about, yeah, can't make it. So, if you wanted to do another street project and set a lower amount for that, you certainly can.
So, didn't we vote on this last time though?
We gave.
We voted to change it.
Okay.
And then it actually has to be done by resolution, so it's a, that's why it's resolution 2017.
Perfect, gotcha. I was just checking.
Yeah, yeah, we voted to change it, so this is actually the paperwork that falls.
Deja vu, so.
All right, no more discussion? Call the vote? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, so we've gotten our votes. Mitch with.
My friend and trail had talked about this before, but we've got all our documents in the UTE. We're expecting bid letting in the spring for that project and we haven't heard on a date that they set yet, but we should be hearing that shortly. Nicholson Road project, I see we have an item on the agenda later, so I'll save that discussion for them. But we did meet with, asked them, ended meeting with them last Tuesday. I believe you guys have my meeting minutes from the meeting package, so we can save that discussion till later. The North Main Street extension, I did follow up with the winters thing that was on it and they are not interested in participating in the project. They declined that proposal. So, I guess going that, I'm not sure what direction you guys want to go. I think it sounds like we're probably gonna put that project on hold.
That would be the road into the lane we want up there?
Yep. I mean, at this stage, I think if they're not willing to participate, you know, if someone comes along and wants to buy that property, we set aside the right of way. Try to capture enough money to build a project in the future. And then when someone's already to develop and we can get that other side, then that'd be the time to build that road, I think.
I would agree with that.
Wastewater study, the design work is underway. We have a person working with Craig a little bit to get some flow data and whatnot, so we're working on that study, so we can get that off to the B and M people. On the force account side, we did, you know, when the mayor was in on Tuesday, we demoed a GIS system that we've been building. Dan's actually here. Sounds like a few of you know him already, but he's been helping us in our office with that project he's been working on, so he was interested in it overnight. And so, if you don't know him, Dan Renner, he lives in town here, so.
He's an engineer now?
GIS analyst.
Yeah.
Just mapping stuff.
I think I know Dan.
What's that?
I know him.
I asked if he was with you and he said, "No, I don't know."
Well, you're smarter than your sister.
I hope so. I can only wish, I guess.
Who got more scholarships, neither of mine.
And I'll say that was, I mean, it was pretty cool. I only got the tail end of it when we met on Tuesday. But, it's kind of cool to see some of the work they're doing on the GIS and how that's gonna help in the future. Craig and Teresa got to see that too, where you just really get to see what project got put in, how things work, be able to find some of that data a lot quicker than what we've had in the past.
And what we've been doing is building your guys' system and we're gonna promote it to the other clients. So, we're kind of using yours as a demo. So, you know, you're not getting any fees for this work right now, so we're just getting it built and you guys will be able to use it and then just as a selling point for us as a company to try to get more of that type of work from our other clients.
Working with the county and, you know, we can work off the county GIS. They're sharing their information with us, so we all get, you know, up to date, you know, map information right away as it happens, or, you know, a lot more timely than, you know, we could do it here with us, so kind of, like I said, it'll be a lot quicker, a lot easier. We can just log on to the system, click on a piece of property, have that information there. If we want to look at our water system, they'll bring it up, our sewer system, I mean it, it'll be really handy to have it, I mean, it'll be very useful.
Other force account work is the Slurry Seal project we set up. Sent out our bid package to Sioux Falls, so they'll be turning around and bidding that with their work for the Slurry Seal project. And we haven't heard a date on when they are gonna bid that, but that'll be coming up in the next month or so.
It's in the next couple of weeks, yeah. And Slurry Seal's pretty much the same as a Micro Seal, there's, except we don't get over that stuff. A lot of it's a name change, just for ADA purposes, so. But otherwise, it'd be about the same products what we had before, there's just a few changes, like with the oils or the size of the ship and stuff like that, so just kind of. In the name for it, so.
Sure. So, was it a Slurry Seal or a Micro Seal that you did on Kelly?
Micro.
It was Micro.
Yeah, and truthfully, I don't think, I'll even tell the difference between the two when the products come. They look the same, look back the same, color the same, everything like that, so.
Looks good.
Any questions for Mitch?
I have a question. And I thought about it because you mentioned the wastewater study. How are, and maybe this is more directed at Craig, but where are we at with infiltration citywide?
I would say we're fairly decent shape. A lot of our infiltration right now is gonna be service lines. The city mains are pretty tight. We've got a couple lines that are still clay pipe, then we've got some INI, but the majority of our infiltration is gonna be from service lines.
Really? I mean, can you break that down to percentage or not?
I was at a, at the regionalization meeting and Sioux Falls kind of did some studying on that. They figured that if they would completely go in and redo a street sewer project and not touch service lines, you're correcting about 50% of your INI.
Really, just for the main?
Yeah. So, 50% of what you had before, when you get it cut down, it's still your service lines.
We actually, as part of the way through the study, you know, we're looking at some graphs. That's some flow data that we've been getting from Craig. And we correlate that against rain events and so you can see how much rains are getting spikes. So, we need to look at that to try to evaluate how much infiltration into what we are.
Could you also, I assume you could also just about narrow that down to neighborhood too, Ben?
Yeah.
Over neighborhoods, I would think there'd be more infiltration than.
When you pop manholes, you can tell from one manhole to the next if you have a huge increase or, you know, slight increase, they're tough to tell, but significant ones, you can tell from just one manhole to the next. You can tell which direction it's coming from.
So, right now, I assume we're getting probably just about zero infiltration?
Nope, right now with some full permits, we're getting, we're up there like maybe.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about some. But that's not necessarily infiltration though.
It's INI, inflow infiltration, it's inflow is what it's considered. So, when they get, like in the spring, we'll get rid of those, but then we'll have high water tables, so then we're still gonna. So, you really don't notice a big difference in your flows until August, September, when you get good dry times.
So, this, this study that we're doing and future treatment, whatever.
Right.
I mean, that takes that all into account?
Yeah, there's, there's some portions of the report that go on infiltration and inflow. You know, the bulk of this report will kind of revolve around treatment.
But you have to plan on treating infiltration though.
Yeah, you plan on that plus percentage above, you know, for.
And I mean, if you're, and that's why I asked, because if 50% of what you put in there is just infiltration, I mean, you gotta know that.
Well, 50% of, 50 cent, 50% of all of the normal flow would be, you know, like, let's say normal flows are 150,000 gallons a day and we're getting 300,000 of what we do our mains, we're down to 225, so you have, for your 50%, it'd be like 75,000 gallons that you'd be on a daily use. So, it's, you're always gonna have your regular flows, but then you're gonna have, they'd cut your extra flow in half by 50%, cut it down by 50%. If, you know, when you do all your mains and everything like that. Like I said, our mains are in pretty good shape, our manholes are in excellent shape.
But there's no way to address the service lines?
You can, we're gonna, we'll try doing some cambering with ours and see if we can identify some of the worst areas. But you can, if you have an area that's really bad, that you can tell that you have a lot of water coming through, you can, it's a homeowner's line, we can make them fix it, so.
The city can make a homeowner put in a new service line?
Just like we can if they have a break on their water line. Because it's water loss, you know, is money that's coming out of the city's funds and same way of treating that water, you know, if it's over an excessive amount, you know, you're constantly.
Interesting, all right, thanks.
All right, with that, if we don't have any other questions, we'll jump over, being where we're with Craig anyway, we'll jump to the public works.
Well, we've been filling in puddles, we come across, these guys have been carrying some cold batch rate trucks with them, so if they come across some of the control, some of their stuff. Keep the water from getting in there, blow them out any bigger. We touched on the stairs, equipments, it'll seem to be in good shape again. We had a few little maintenance, or some maintenance stuff that we've been doing on it to get it, you know, keep running good, oil changes, things like that. Along with streets, I did some, been doing some checking on backhoe prices. Got the Minnesota State bid out there, which is one that we can buy off of. And I also worked with the CAT dealership, talked to them. There is a city in South Dakota that's bidding a backhoe similar to what we want. So, we're looking at maybe a few options that they'll have on it available so that if the bid comes in nice, we'll maybe look at proceeding with that, you know. There's two pieces of equipment that I'm kind of looking at. And so, I'd like to kind of, if it works out, I'd like to buy it off of somebody else's bid instead of going out and bidding it all ourselves, it's just so much simpler. And that way, you can get the piece of equipment that you want. So, I'll be pursuing that. We're actually gonna go demo a couple of them this week, the two that we're looking at and just see what we think of over that percent. You're looking at that, water and sewer, DMRs, I did give them sent off today, so the year, all the year paperwork for state and EPA has all been done and sent in. I just gave Mitch the rest of the paperwork for this year, so we get John Fisher working on a few hydrants. Jess did grab a pH sample today on that pond two and the pH came down, so we grabbed ammonia sample, TSS and DODs, we took those in today. Hopefully, they come in, the water looked really clear, so as long as their ammonia looks, probably more than anything, it'd be ammonia limits, it'd be the ones that'll be tight. Comes in good, we'll be discharged that pond and we'll have two ponds completely empty for spring, so we'll be in really good shape. Doesn't, we're still in good shape. We're a lot better shape this year than we were last year, so. Park and pool nothing at this time, public buildings. I've been looking at inventory, we're probably a little over half down with inventory right now, so we finish that up here, so when they have their products coming over there, they can have that paperwork too, so. That's all I got. Just, may I ask something?
Got a couple once, for instance, nice bonfire you had.
Oh, yeah, we did burn the fire here.
Good timing on that, you're part of that one too, by the way. It was brought to my attention on the corner of Second and Western, the, there was a, the United Methodist Church sign got supposedly, no proof, hit by a snowplow. And do you know anything about that at all?
I'm the one who closed Second Western, I know I did not hit. So, I can tell you that it was not a city plow.
That's, that's.
It could've been a county because they follow Western from South Street going north. That's County Road to take care of, so might've been a county, but.
So, UMC's on their own as far as that part goes. Is there any, if they want to replace that sign, let me tell me, is there any stipulations, take it out?
Teresa, talk to Teresa about that for signage.
They got it properly pla, it makes me wonder if they've got it properly placed and you said a snowplow hit it because it's not supposed to be in the right of way, which makes me think they were.
It's, it's been pretty good and it's not that far off, so if I need a relay to them, it needs to be replaced.
They can't be in the right of way at all.
So, I mean, private property.
On the side of that pole.
I'd love to look through the right ways through there.
Yeah.
When it comes to that, then I'll, I'll just get back with you.
They should just, yeah, come down to the office and I can give the sign regulations and.
Okay.
And it's probably gonna be about 16 feet from back to that curb.
16?
It is, it's a big right of way.
It's a big right of way, but. 16 feet away from the curb, well, then it's definitely in the right of way then, because it's like, more like two feet from the right of way. I've been there a long time. Okay, so is there a chance you could email me that, by the way, break that page so I can forward that to the governing body of the United Methodist Church? Sorry, I was asked.
Is there a curb on Western?
Not on Western, there's not, but I think.
Everybody keeps talking about the very curb.
On Second Street, I think it's on the Second Street side. On Second Street, I think it's on the Second Street side.
Yeah. It got schmucked pretty good by something, whatever it was, you know, and then, so, so I just.
There'll be a curb on Western.
Okay.
Right after we do Vanmore.
Right, yeah.
Probably four. Probably be four, yeah.
I have a couple questions. What kind of backhoes are you looking on?
Uh, Cat and John Deere.
I didn't know Cat made a backhoe.
Yep, they actually got a pretty nice one. Uh, we've never bought into CAT equipment before because CAT was really high in all their equipment, but over the last few years, their prices have came down extremely. So I actually think CAT will probably be one of the lower of the two.
Second question, uh, I didn't see a bill in there for the payloader?
I think it was in the last.
We already paid for that.
Yeah, I think.
We paid the bill for the payloader last month?
I think so.
I think so, we split it three ways.
Yeah, it came to about six thousand dollars.
Totally, I guess I don't remember seeing it.
I haven't seen the one for the rent of the other one yet, that was only about four hundred dollars, four forty, something like that. Yeah, the payload itself came to us.
They didn't get it back that long.
We got it back just before, they sent the bill like, probably gave them their piece of backdoor payload box.
I found the bill and I had called Craig and said, do we have this back already? That's what I thought too, I thought, well, I knew it was out, but.
Maybe I wasn't looking for it because I didn't think it'd be there that quick, but.
That and Lou Daga for finance officer?
Okay, I have in my report the, um, uh, sales revenue, um, comparisons from last December to this, um, previous December. Um, I also have included all the committee funds and we're in all sitting, um, and also, um, the bill report, I kind of highlighted some of the higher things in there that you just voted on. There was also several yearly dues that you probably noticed, there were one time fee for all of us to be in different, um, areas and stuff, so that's just a, a one time thing. You'll also notice in the prepaid's that I did pay two bonds, those are always due on the first of January, and it's something we always do prepaid every year, it's a one year, or once, once a year payment on those specific bonds. Um, the elections are coming up, um, you guys voted on that last time. Um, the petitions, um, will be circulating, um, you can start by picking them up on January twenty-seventh, the deadline to have them in, then here is February twenty-fourth, and that's for anyone up for reelection. And then I've also included the calendar events. Any questions?
What, did someone pick up on petition again?
The twenty-seventh of January. So a week, a week from Friday. Week from Friday. See you then.
And you guys do it in the table?
It's my, and Jones, Metting and Keel that are on there for election.
Easy, Tom.
Anything else for Adra?
Um, the deal and beer is the, I see you have a lot of dates on here, but that deal and beer that we had the information on?
Um, that, on the red dinner for like, late essential?
Yeah, February seven, is that right?
I believe so.
Yes.
You do such a good job of putting things into dates.
I know, I didn't even see that until in home. Didn't put it in, not.
Because we're not sharing much, that's fine, that's fine.
Depends, depends on who's going, so I think that's gonna be discussed.
We found a, we found a ice shack heater, so maybe we'll.
I'll drive, Martin.
I want to say thanks for putting all the gates in there.
No problem. If there's anything that's missing, please let me know, I'm, we're happy to put those in there for you, so.
I have a question regarding the first and second, you know, we saw, we see, uh, positive, um, amounts.
Oh, the first and second?
How can the first and second go down in the third door? Help me understand that.
That's a good question, Teresa. Why is that?
Well, there's, there are different payments, you know, third penny is your bed board and booth, so it's.
So, so more people, so I guess more people drink and slumming out town.
So maybe a lot of restaurants, a lot of bars drinking, I mean that.
Bars you have more money?
I mean, yeah.
It's December, so.
So, so there, so there are, there are different taxes, I mean, there are kinds of different stuff going on, um, so.
And now if a hotel, we may see that, right? That should have.
Yeah, depending on their vacancy, I imagine.
Depending.
We don't have.
We don't have a bed tax on the hotel.
Oh, it's not, oh, it's not bad. Okay.
Well, it's coined that, but we don't actually do that.
Because you can.
I recall when they opened, they requested that we didn't do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
At least we'll offer a while to get our luck and going before we put another tax on them, so.
Until we get like the Mall of America or something like that, slap thirty dollars for the taxes on. That's probably before that, Martin.
See that? Alright, thank you, Adra.
Yep.
Unless we put them all up there, guys.
I know.
Filthy birds are long still.
I know.
Alright, move on. Teresa, to your report.
Okay, just a few updates for you, just want to let you know, um, we did put a little blip in the newsletter that's gonna be coming out here this next month, here in February, about the Makeup and Road project. Just to let them know that, you know, we are discussing it, it's gonna be a major project that will affect most of the city probably, so let them know that, you know, we're discussing the issue, and they, they can come to any open meeting and further input, so. If people on the street kind of approach you or wondering, there you go, they got it from there, so. Um, Vandemont Avenue, I did want to put a little something in here about this. We've touched on it a few times, I think it tonight, a little bit of, maybe a possible future project, but, um, with that being said, you know, Mitch actually put together some cost estimates of what's that project, just enough estimates, what it would cost to do that. Gathered that information with that, um, we then asked him to research, what do we really have for right of way, because you know, we're, we don't have enough right of way. I wanted him to confirm that, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, and we don't have, we only got thirty-three feet right of way from nine on. So we're correct in that, but it, but now it's confirmed, I just want to make sure. And if it is all right with the council, um, the property owners along there, we really haven't made contact with them for a while. Now for a few years, you know, I don't know if any situations have changed or not, but I'd like to at least make contact with them and see if they might entertain again. They donating some right of way to the city, or allowing us to purchase some, you know, because that's probably our greatest hurdle at this point to get over, so. You know, I would at least like to make contact with them again and see if anything has changed, and then, you know, at least, you know, making that contact, getting the information back from them, we'll know, you know, what direction we need to go from there. So if nobody has any objections, I'm gonna probably pursue that and just touch base with them, you know.
I recommend any, which shows those.
I mean, I, like I said, last time I talked with one of the property owners there, that was quite four years ago now, so you know, things may have changed, we don't know. So at least, unless you ask, we don't know, so.
That would include, uh, correct me on the, Mr. Haugen, Haugy, okay, from Muddings?
He, oh yeah. And, and you know, he, he may have a change of heart, so I, I don't know, but, you know, we rezoned it, he rezoned his commercial there, so maybe he's thinking about doing something in the future with that, you know. A paved road in front of it would look a lot more attractive to an buyer, I would, I would assume, you know, so. You know, possibly, so, always your job to him and touch base anyway, so.
Okay.
So Cam did that, um, I am checking in to discuss about, um, what other cities do for maternity or paternity leave, so I am checking with other cities, I've got some feedback from a few of them, and kind of wait for a few more, so we will just have some more information for you, at the next meeting, which you know, you know, kind of what everybody else has, or you know, what some other cities have done, so you guys can discuss that. Mitch kind of update on the, the bike trail project, I don't have any more information, it's sitting with the DOT, I talked to Jerry Ortman last week, it's in with the environmental group, so who knows how long that will be, he wouldn't give me a timeframe to come out, but, uh, hopefully soon, we're still waiting on that. Um, and as Arden brought up, upcoming, the South Dakota Municipal Day is gonna sponsor what they call a Municipal Day at the Legislature. Um, the night before, they always have a red dinner for any municipalities or, or, you know, people that come from municipals, uh, where you can sit down and talk with, you know, your representatives there, and then the next day, you can actually go in and sit in on some of the sessions, just to see how things work and how things go. We haven't really participated with this in the past because unfortunately always falls on a council meeting date, from our council, and so, I mean, two of you could be gone, but if it's any more than that, we have to entertain, you know, moving our meeting date, so. Don't know what this council's thoughts are, if you want to just keep the meeting date as is, or if you want to consider moving it and attending the event.
I'll be here, I can't go, so.
I'll be here as well.
I cannot go. I can't be there. Is there any, are there any groups, sometimes chamber groups, anything like that, that we've heard that are going to any other legislative, like South Dakota Day at the Legislature, anything like that?
I guess I have not heard of any other groups, yeah. Like that I know of, yeah.
No change in our meeting?
No.
Well, I need one more, Dan.
Arden wants to go.
I don't know.
It's good.
If you're not driving, I don't know.
Knew that was coming. That's why I said.
Well, keep it as is, like I said, if, if one or two of you do want to go, um, we need to know by the twenty-fourth of January, that's when the registration deadline is, so. Keep the meeting as it.
So we'd have, we'd have to drive out that afternoon and.
Yeah, yeah. Or stay over.
It's a, it's a day and a half type of thing, you would assume.
Yeah, you all have good ribs.
Yeah, well, I'll let you.
Okay, just call in and let me or Adra know and get your registered board if you want to. Basically, the, the only other thing, I just wanted to let the council know that, um, the county is, um, doing a pre mitigation plan. Um, basically, Minnehaw County and Lincoln County, excuse me, every five years has to update our hazardous mitigation plan. And it's required by federal and state law. Basically, it's the communities within those counties get together and, um, you know, kind of identify what our hazards are, how we can maybe mitigate, you know, some of the hazards if the, say a tornado would hit, or if a flood would come or whatnot. We identify, you know, those hazards and what we have in place to mitigate them. We have to be part of the process because if, uh, we don't participate in updating the plan, we are not eligible for any federal funding, like so, tornado hits, or a flood comes, we won't get any federal funding from FEMA or any of those groups, so. Um, just want to let you know, I'm planning to go and represent the city, but I'll be, and it's only about, it's probably a year long process too, because they only have a meeting every, you know, quarter or whatnot. So it, but it'll be like three or four meetings, and so, just know we're working on it, and I'll update you as we go along, so.
No, something like that, Teresa, did, are there, does it have to be the same person at each of the meetings, or do you just need representation at?
You just need representation, um, because they count it, you sign in and you, you know, what city you're, you're from, and then they count that time towards your city.
Sure. The only reason I ask is, is, it's an important thing for us to be at if you're sick. Have, you know, just having a backup plan, knowing that we have somebody in place to go if you can't be there, or something, have to family or anything like that, you know, God forbid, but, you know, just that we have, it's not all on you to be there for each one of those, so.
Yep, yeah, if I can't make, um, I'll send somebody to my place. Yeah, because we do have to participate in it, and like I said, it's not too many meetings, it's maybe like I said, four or five meetings in a whole year, so.
In, in that same vein, I don't know how many years ago it was, but the city of Hartford actually has a disaster plan that we put together in conjunction with the fire department, city staff, city council, the county. So, yeah, emergency management, so I would encourage you all to, to look at it and read it when you get a chance. I mean, it's not a great deal of information, but it's, it's kind of like paint by colors, or paint by numbers. And it, you know, say, uh, tornado hits town, or a tanker on the interstate crashes with some of the nastiest chemicals known to man. I mean, it literally, I mean, you open the book and you go to, this is what we do. So you don't have the mayor, you know, standing on a top of a pickup with a low horn. Everybody, you're going to school!
Right, well, the tanker was good for that.
Well, you know, really, it, it's, it is, it's just, it's paint by numbers. Depending on, depending on the emergency, paint by numbers, how it works, who's involved, who's gonna do what. I mean, it spells out the spokesman for the, for all the press, you know, and I would encourage you all to read it. Just so in the event there is something horrific that happens in this town. Because I'm guessing that if Teresa's house doesn't sustain a great deal of damage, she will come down here and get it out and just start checking it off.
I, I can email it out to everyone, I've emailed once, I mean, it's got, got it, but I don't know about you.
Yeah, like you're saying, it's best to not be cracked in the book the first time, at two in the morning when that's happening.
Yeah, I just want you guys to be aware of it, because that's something, that's been, how many years we did that?
Three years or something.
I thought the same, but you were part of that version.
I was, well, you were part of it too.
Well, I was, but you were more. On the committee, we is a part of it. Um, okay, yeah, I, I would definitely, because I never did get that or a copy electronically, and I was trying to look for them, I believe, six months ago.
I'll, I'll just email it out.
Firewall or not.
Alright. Thing else for Teresa? Alright, we'll move on to old business, and we've got updates on the Makeup and Road project.
Like Mitch had mentioned, you know, basically it's just kind of an update, we did meet with Sam Assam, um, Jeremy was there also with us, and also Jesse Fonker, and we talked with them, Mitch kind of did a good job of going through the project, laying out, you know, here's what we plan to do, here's what your portion of the street's gonna cost, here's where the sewer, um, you know, the water is. Kind of explained to him about the list stations, um, I think it, it was a good meeting, and I think it was important. Um, Sam did it, it seemed surprised to me, and I very fully anticipate he's going to have to do some sharing in this. But, uh, we presented all the numbers to him and asked that he go take it, you know, back with him, with his engineer, look it over, and take a couple of weeks, hopefully get back to us and let us know, you know, what his thoughts are, and so maybe hopefully at that time, we can know what he is willing to participate in the plan, and maybe have a more productive discussion in February about the project, so. We're basically just kind of waiting to hear back from him, seeing what his thoughts and feelings are on it, I think that's pretty. Um, Mitch did, in your package is a copy of the meeting notes, you know, kind of at least, yeah, we did, um, anything else to add to that?
I was gonna say, thank you for putting the meeting notes together, I thought overall it was quite positive meeting.
Yeah, I thought so.
Didn't seem like there were any surprises, like Teresa said. Um, it'll be interesting to see after they get a chance to crunch the numbers, what they're gonna come back with.
Yeah, we've had some dialogues since, and we're trying to break down the numbers a little bit further for them, so give them as much information as they need to make those decisions, so. Um, I would expect it'll be a couple of weeks before we hear a final say from them, but.
I had a couple of questions, I, because I, I should have pulled out my drawing of the plan. It says on the box called, it said there was another crossing to the east.
Well, Sam and his development, with his concept plan, he's planning another crossing further east of there also.
Oh.
He is on his own.
On his own?
Yeah.
So is there a way to consult, because it kind of sounded like you discussed that?
We discussed that, you know, like, he didn't seem to, he thinks he still needs another connection is kind of the takeaway that I, that we got from it, because he felt that to eliminate that crossing that he's planning, might get too far of a span for his development.
Okay.
Um, because the idea there was if. Um, because the idea there was if we, you know, that was able to be eliminated, he would benefit by that, and then, you know, if he would be willing to pay for the, to get the box culvert paid for, that's what we were trying to see if there was an opportunity to try to get more participation there.
Okay.
I did get the feeling, it seemed like though, um, you know, as soon as we can get services down to him, it seems like he wants to move ahead with his development.
Yeah, that was my other question.
Yeah.
Did you get the sense, 'cause it kinda reads like...
I know, that's a concern of the council.
We're gonna do this, but you guys need to do this, is it kind of a...
Yeah, I mean, he, they couldn't commit anything at the minute, obviously, but I think the sense I got is, they know that they need to pay their fair share, and that's, that's expected. Um, the question they probably have is, how much can they take on upfront, 'cause we're asking them to pay all these assessments upfront. And so, the, one of the discussions too was about possibly just extending utilities down there and getting those to them, and then maybe doing the street, you know, the next year or when, 'cause he might not be ready to take on the street assessment right away. You know, if we get, if he had sewer and water, he could at least start developing some lots, get some cash flow on that development, and then possibly could take on the street assessment. You know, those are some of the questions they're trying to think of, I guess, right now. But that's kind of the, how we left it with him, is that we were, you know, those, the costs are showing up, up here, minus the sewer costs, we're still reevaluating those with him. But, uh, we are asking them to pay those upfront.
How many, how many residential lots do we have available to build on in Hartford today?
Plated lots?
Twenty?
Yeah.
Maybe twenty?
We gotta grow shortage of lots.
Yeah, yeah, we do, we do have a shortage of lots.
And shortage of the lots that are higher than mine, some of those, I don't know.
I just issued three building permits, so three of those lots are gone.
That cul-de-sac Jardine's put in, sounds like all the lots are resold to that, right? That's what we started, that's what we... Lots are sold, let's see.
You know, I feel like we relayed that information to them pretty well, that they understand that it's eyes and beyond their development, putting the things going, and it, it felt like they're saying, get it over to us and we're ready to go, they're not gonna sit on it, even if you didn't feel it. It sounded like there was any sort of sitting and speculating after that point, it's...
Right, just out of curiosity, if, if you put the utilities in?
Yeah.
So, then what, what do you, I assume the utilities are gonna follow the road?
Yeah, we'd still have to work out agreements to acquire regions.
Yeah, but I mean, you're still gonna rough in a road though, aren't you?
Not necessarily, I mean, we could, we wouldn't have to do that.
How could they market lots without a road?
They would still, there would still be a road, I mean, they still, they still have access off of...
You know, it gets plotted out.
Yeah.
Property pins are all out there, and, so, they can, it happened to Jardines, they were building houses for the utilities, they were even out there.
We would still leave the existing Mickelson Road intact. So, they still have access off of that.
Hey, you still have Mickelson Road as it is now up there, and then he'd have to come off of that, and...
Come off of Mickelson?
Yeah.
But the utilities wouldn't follow, the utilities wouldn't follow that.
They'll follow the future.
They'll follow the future.
Right. So, you'd just be going through the cattails in the field. Those people living out there feel like they're living on par tee, I mean, taking a dirt path up to their new street. I, I guess I can't speak to that because I don't, I don't live on the north side of the...
But honestly, so would he, his be a downtown problem, or is he uptown, uptown problem?
Twenty, honestly, I, I, I sit here and I tremble a little, twenty lots, seventeen now, plated to build on this town. If we don't realize as a city council that we're gonna tie our own, I mean, we, we, we sit here and we make our own destiny at this point, how do we promote growth? At some point, we need to stop talking, figure out how to get it done.
It's been proven too that if you stop developing for a period of time, it's hard to get a new beginning. As long as builders wanna build in town, as long as there's lots, or to keep doing it, once we push them to another town, they just get familiar with that town, and they'll start building there, and they won't come back.
You gotta spend money to make one.
I shared a survey with Teresa, and I should have sent it to you guys too, I think you would call that, Teresa. It, uh, something that ran across my office, my desk, yeah. Sioux Falls is the number two, or is it number one? Number one.
The number one.
That, that survey was number one most sought-after destination for home building in the country. Um, uh, and I can't remember the demographic on that, but, uh, I'll make a point to share that, if you guys are so inclined, to just kinda reinforce what Travis is saying, that, uh, it, it's, it's a national survey, and the, the communities that are in there are all across the country, uh, one through ten, and Sioux Falls is on the top. And I consider us part of Sioux Falls, we saw Metro, so, uh, that might be something that might reinforce what Travis is saying. I think that south side of Mickelson would get bought up pretty quick, and turn into development, if we go ahead and get that and start and put something, at least that first portion of it.
Just to play devil's advocate though, and, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I agree with Travis and Scott, but just to play devil's advocate, Christmas isn't full. Let's expand, let's, let's, let's expand on that. We need to be in there here and finding out why isn't it full.
I can tell you that.
Is it a developer problem? Is it a, is it an owner problem? Why isn't that? That's the real question.
Christmas only have probably three lots plated that you could buy, the rest they have not plated.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, why, I mean, they're in a position probably better than anybody, so why aren't they plated?
Developer problem.
Have you tried to work with them? Have you talked to anybody that's tried to work with them?
I have talked to them, and, um, the last time I spoke with them, which was about six months ago, in regards to that. Um, the one thing that, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn by saying this, but one thing that they'd like to see, and I wish Lori or Gerald were here right now, would be to tie together East of a Trail Investment Trap, that is the key for them, okay? Um, Jess and I've kinda talked about this a little bit and stuff, and, and I even did the swear over tip, I was sorry, I didn't just wanna go there, but, uh, but I investigated that a little bit. Uh, so, to answer your question, uh, unless something has changed in the last six months with Gerald and Lori, uh, if, uh, I guess, we were able to, you know, establish that link, they in turn would be more conducive, 'cause they have the, they've got the engineer friends all ready to go. Um, I've seen them, and, um, um, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to share them with you probably, uh, I don't know for sure, but, um, that's to answer your question.
I had lunch, I had breakfast with, with a contractor who wanted to buy land, put streets in, build stuff, found it very difficult to work with them.
And that doesn't surprise me, though you're...
Buy land, put streets in him, himself, not coming to the city, not coming to Christmas, I'll pay for the street, I wanna buy this land.
With Christmas?
Uh, two months later, still to a limit, so. So, we, as a council, we make sure we reach out and try to help people figure out a way to get this stuff done.
Well, and, yeah, you know, I think in some of those cases, we can't, we can't force the hand of the developer or owner. But, when you got one that's ready, ready to move, and ready, ready to push dirt, wants to get things going up, let's try to stay out of it, I think is the big thing.
So, we're hearing that, we need to help and put a street in, and I've got, I know a contractor says, hey, I'll do it all, and so, then we need to make sure that, Jesse, I don't know, who in the city needs to help, you, you know, keep, keep moving this thing down the road.
We have talked to Christmas a couple of times, they've been in, so, kinda aware of what they're thinking and giving them some information, but at this point, I'm not sure if they're...
They just updated their preliminary plans, and I got, I got the impression that we were gonna see another phase coming here soon for, to review, but haven't seen anything yet.
Could, um, could we, you know, request Jesse to reach out to them again? I mean, is this two of, is that getting the cart of the head of the horse? I know that is...
Yeah, I don't know. You're lucky to say too much.
I don't, I don't, I'm shy for a second.
Well, and, yeah, with that, let's stay on, on topic with Mickelson Road. We're right there, Cindy, did you have some comments?
Well, all I was gonna say is, I know of two people that would like to build in Christmas edition, if they could go forward. So, that I was just gonna ask too about Christmas, but you guys kinda covered, but I did, in the last two weeks, I've had two people ask me if they know anything, just 'cause of where our office is. And we don't, but I think too, we need to maybe work with them to try to get that to go, 'cause I think there's people that would like to be in that area that can't, 'cause there's nothing. There's very few.
I know there is.
There's a couple corners, and then one on the other corner, by a apartment building, which I get that. So, I think, I think there's interest if we can get them to move forward, and so, I was just gonna ask about that too. Thank you.
I think, I think one thing I'd like to add too, I mean, I'm not the same, we also, I mean, all this assessment stuff, you know, Jardines have to be, I'm not sure if this has been presented to them, with all the numbers that, that they'll be responsible to in an assessment, and, you know, the late assessments have to be established and all those things too.
I don't know if that means we need to have a special meeting, we need to get something on the, on, you know, ready for bid letting sooner than later.
Well, the next meeting I'm planning to come with design contracts for you guys, for us to get started at least on design, I mean, if that's, and Teresa...
Yeah, I hope when we hear something back from Sam, before, there's an extra week in here, so I'm hoping we'll hear something back from him before that first meeting of Deb's, so you guys know what he's willing to participate, and we can decide what, what we wanna do for the project, and then start coordinating all that stuff, yeah.
So, if we're gonna go for bid on it, we need to do it sooner or later, 'cause this is the time you need to go for bids, otherwise your prices go up.
Exactly.
So, we, we kinda need to know about, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we've, we've all been knowing that we needed the lots and that, but it's just, but we needed to know where Sam is, and things like that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I hope we get some feedback from him.
That's good news to hear that the meeting went well.
So, when, hypothetically speaking, if we go move forward with this bid letting construction, when would we, we'd be issuing bonds in two thousand eighteen, or would we issue them in seventeen?
I guess it all depends on what part of the project we're gonna do, how many bonds we're gonna be issuing.
Yeah.
I, I could, I don't know if we can move ahead fast enough to get them in seventeen, maybe eighteen, maybe, maybe we would.
But it may be even, do you issue them on the front of the project, or at the end, or during?
You can do it at any time. It's just, I'm, you got in reserves to pay upfront, so it's...
Do you know what, you could have, when the next debt service is gonna be paid off under?
No, I don't, not off the top of my head.
It was, uh...
It's coming up, ain't it?
We have one that's gonna be paid off in the end of this, the seventh, December this year, um, a smaller one, and then I don't think the next ones after that are another five years out.
Only five years out.
Yeah, they, they have some pretty long lists still, so, I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, that's mostly a lot of the SRF, the sewer and water loans. We'll have one December this year paid off, and then it's, I think the next ones after that are almost five years out, so.
Our sewer and water are pretty decent, so, I mean, we probably won't have to borrow a lot against that, uh, do the project.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the utility part of it.
Yeah, so, what the loans that are, or the debt that's getting paid off is against that, I mean, it affects your debt nation, but...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if it's...
I'd say, it really depends on what part of the project we're gonna do, if we're gonna do, what's that, first phase?
Yeah, one.
I don't think we'll need to issue bonds for that, seriously.
No, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of the, I'm thinking of one, two, and three.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm, that's, that's what I'm thinking about, is five million dollars, you know, with a million dollar bridge. You know, the utility portion of that project's gonna be the small portion of it.
Yeah.
So, 'cause we're gonna have to issue bonds if it's a five million dollar project.
Oh, yeah, definitely then.
You know, and I would assume that debt service on that would be, I bet that'd be two hundred thousand or better a year, it'd be more.
I'm more, I'm...
Probably quarter of a million a year or better.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a big, that's a big chunk to bite off.
That's why, I think we need to... It's taking, but, it's taking some time, but I, you know, we're taking, we're making all the right steps, we could be the council that didn't take the right steps and spends six million dollars on a road for convenience and leads to no development. Or it could be the council that doesn't do anything and lets everything dry out. I mean, it, it, we're navigating through it, I think about as fast as we can at this point, but it's, you, probably one or the other. You know, which, either one, I really don't wanna be on, I don't kinda wanna be on film, so that puts a six million dollar road out there to open up a huge amount of development and let the city grow.
No, and I, I agree, I just, I mean, the thing everybody has to remember though is the debt service, 'cause you take, you take quarter of a million dollars right off the top, you know, and all the fun stuff goes away. And somebody's gonna have to tell the fire department, you're getting eighty thousand bucks and nothing more.
Right.
You tell everybody, they're not getting any.
Oh, you stopped, yeah.
You tell Craig, you know, to get a shovel, and, you know what I mean?
Get tobacco.
You know, like, get a shovel back, to vacuum out the whole payload. You know, you take, I mean, that's just the truth, I mean, you take a quarter of a million off the top, there's a lot of fun stuff that stops.
There's fifty thousand off all your operating maintenance expenses, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, clean times lead to good times. Yeah, and, and I'm not opposed to it, I just, you know, everybody needs to be well aware of that debt service, that's, you know, if it's a five million dollar phase one, two, and three, I mean, that would be the biggest project this season's ever done, so, and it'll come with a price, I can match it, so.
That's where you need that development to start fast, so you can get started recouping in the morning back.
But that's why we need to make sure it recoups though, and that's, that's the biggest thing, is we need to put the stops in place.
Yeah, we'll see what Sam says.
Yeah, that's kind of the point we're at now. And I guess, and just a, a side note with Mickelson, we are still trying to get ahold of Mr. Jacobson, he has that, um, property there on the corner. He was out of town over the Christmas holidays, um, can't find any number to contact him, his house number's been disconnected, and so...
I sent them a letter, just...
I was gonna say, you just sent them a letter this week, hopefully we get a response, get him to talk about what, where the ways we need from him, and then possibly maybe send it to another...
Truck driver, does the city have a lot that needs to be hauled?
It's a little...
I think I got him, I have a number for him.
How much did he do?
I have a driver, there's no way for him to get back for vacations.
Oh, he's back right here, so, yeah, so...
So, the next step, Mitch, you're bringing us a proposal, start designing, right? To do construction drawings?
Yeah, and we hope to hear more back, I have some between now and then, by next meeting.
From, from that proposal for construction drawings to bid letting is?
What's that?
From that proposal, once you have a green light to start construction drawings, to being ready for bid?
Yeah, well, if it's the first phase project, and we can, we can knock those out in a couple of months, I'd say.
Until we know what portion of the project we're doing, are you gonna be able to do?
Well, we could do, I mean, we could bring a couple of proposals, and just get, I was just planning to get them in your hands, if you have them, so you can...
Let him give them to the council?
Should have this conversation in October.
Yeah, well, I mean, as far as our proposals go, I was planning on sending two of them, one for the first phase, one for the second phase, 'cause if the first phase, or second phase doesn't happen for some reason, then we can get started on the first phase, at least if you guys wanna do that. Um, but at the, on our end, we just wanna make sure we got those agreements in place that we can start.
That'll move on to new business. We can get a letter for the annual report, probably on the post.
And this is just a letter stating that Holmberg Weather Poles will do our annual report. They are our auditors, or city arms, we've had in the last couple of years. We usually always had our auditors do both our annual report and then our audit, it just makes consistency with the numbers, they're familiar then with, you know, what funds we have, what projects we're doing, and so, it just makes it easier to, to push out the annual reports and then come back and do the audits, so. This is just our engagement letter, if the council approved, to let them go ahead and do the annual report, that's done first, mostly our financials get sent to the state, and then they'll come back and do our audit.
They're generally pretty close to that estimate?
Yeah, yeah, they are, um, it did go up a little bit, went from twenty-five hundred to twenty-nine hundred, and I think that's mainly just 'cause, um, the first couple of times they did it, they just kinda estimated their times, now they're kinda familiar with how much time they need to do it, and what it would cost, you know, as far as their time in service, so.
So, you need a motion to accept it?
Yes, I'd like to...
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept and approve the engagement letter for the annual report with Palmberg Weather Post.
Can I second that? Further discussion?
And this is for the yearly report?
Yep, it's for the yearly annual report.
For the yearly annual report, and then we, we do an audit once a year too, but we only by state law have to do an auditorium two, correct?
Sure, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
But we have to do the report every year.
You gotta do the report every year and not send your financials into the state like a balance sheet in your, yeah.
So we got a motion in a second? Ballot, Nelson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yeah.
Keough?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
And do the ordinance regarding appointments of officers? You remember, this was something that came up, I don't remember which meeting this was, it was last meeting or a couple meetings ago, we talked a little bit about. Who are, um, basically our appointment of officers sits right now, all appointments are made by the mayor at the first regular meeting in May, basically the first meeting after installment. So you can be mayor, you can be council, anything like that, appointments are, are due. Teresa can probably say this better than I can, but that's how it sits with the state law. Uh, but cities are allowed to make changes to that if they decide to put different ordinance in place. So the discussion in the past was moving that back to some degree. I would say, you know, just my own comments on that is I don't wanna hamstring future mayors from being able to make a change. But I don't know that it's a great idea for a brand new mayor and a brand new council to make a change right away on their first meeting. So probably a sweet spot in there, whether it's six months or three months or somewhere in there, where they get a chance to get the feet underneath them, work with the people that are appointed for making appointments. But the discussion was mainly to have us talk about that instead of putting ordinance on that, that changes that for Hartford.
Yeah, I'd recommend, uh, if you stagger in those, does that mean that has to do with career exposition?
No, we are not appointing more, the only officers we appoint are the city engineer and the city attorney, those are the only officers we're appointing anymore.
Ours changed a few years ago.
So what happens if he doesn't appoint somebody at that meeting, can you appoint him at the next meeting, at the following meeting? Or is that by default, if he doesn't make an appointment, then the current city engineer and attorney would stay in place?
Basically, the state statute says that the first regular meeting in May, they shall appoint the officers, but it can be changed by an ordinance of the city council, so.
I'd personally like to see it changed to at least three months, and it's, from my past experience, it's, it's not so much a fact of to give a new councillor, new mayor time to learn the job and, and see what's going on. Where, where I think it has hurt the most in the past is if you get a new mayor, a new council, and they come in that first meeting and pull the trigger. There, there was absolutely no time to finish the previous business and make sure that you got everything you needed from those people before they were canned. Because Stockwell's was let go one year in the blink of an eye. And they had been doing work for the city, they were doing work for the city, and you don't wanna call your engineer and say, I know we just fired you, but do you think we could get this stuff?
All right, and the reality is, is we're coming right up on, I mean, let's.
So, and, and that happened with the city administrator, when that position was appointed? Uh, it's just, I, I think the emotions, I think the emotions take over and you forget about where's this, where's that, what are we doing? And, and that's probably what fits the city the hardest.
You know, there's no transition, there's no passing of time, you hope they tell you and they lock off the door.
I know for a fact we called Stockwell's and asked them for.
Well, what else do you do? Do you mean you're?
Well.
They got stuff you need.
Yeah.
And, and that's what I'm saying, if, if you don't have, if you don't have that grace period in there, I mean, if you get people that sit down in May and they know what road they're going down, you got, you got three months to get your ducks in a row to make that transition. And if you don't make that transition in three months and you know you're going down that road, then, then that's just fault of poor council.
I think three months for a, for the engineers, because if you figure out the months, you'll be at the end of projects and before you start a new project. So that way you don't get stuck in the middle of a big project going on, and like, let's say if it was in May right now, we'd be starting Mifflin project and we'd all be lost, and we wouldn't have that road. And if you start, if you do it the first year, then you're in the middle of getting plans made for the following year's projects. So you wanna have them guys kind of laid over there, if you let, let them go, you're not, you're getting affected a lot.
So something in the fall.
Yeah, I'd like that, for first meeting here.
First meeting in September, first meeting in October, personally, I mean, but.
Well, it's the same with attorneys too.
Well, and we interview the attorneys.
Same with the attorney too.
Cause they can help, they can help.
So we made a six month appointment.
Okay.
Yep, yep, and Monahan did as council president, and Howard made a six month appointment. So that we could delay that basically, push that down.
So we can come in, I mean, you can come in from, looking from the outside in and seeing this table, you may think that Mitch does absolutely nothing, sorry to pick on you Mitch, because that's not true, but I'm gonna use you. But then you get behind this table and, and you figure out, oh, Mitch does a whole bunch of stuff and he's actually worth it, you know, well, at the first meeting in May. You don't, you don't know what you're talking about, but then in October or September, whatever it is, you've got a whole different, different look on things, so.
The, the month, the month of the meeting don't matter, I, I think it needs to be at least August or later.
I agree.
That gets you May, June, and July, that gives you six meetings, three months. You know, if you wanna push it to September to, you know, to wrap up projects.
For changing the ordinance, Teresa, would you be looking for, looking for a month, right, like the first meeting in?
Yeah, so whatever, if you guys give me direction to change it, I would type up a, a change in a new ordinance, you have to go through first reading, second reading, and the twenty day publication, so, yeah.
Well, just, just for simplicity, I'm gonna make a motion that we change ordinance six thirteen, revige in section one point zero one zero one to read at the first regular meeting in September.
Second. Are you done?
Yeah.
That's 'cause you took the words right out of my mouth, like I said, I wanted to speak and David, you took it just verbatim, that's awesome, thank you.
Well, that also gives time for intervening, like you do with the.
For base intervening.
It does, gives you that time.
Yeah, but you can be the fun.
Any, any other time, you're just down there talking, and now all of a sudden you get quiet.
I was trying to sneak you in, but you got, you covered the whole thing.
I think September is the right, perfect month. All right, any more discussion? Okay, can I, let's call a vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yeah.
Keough?
Yes.
Moore?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
I mean, the amazing thing, they even include the K.
Yes.
I'm gonna get that in there, you don't have to do that in minutes.
All right, so we'll move on.
How you reading down, how you doing?
Joint jurisdiction with Minnehaw County, um, all the trees cover the, so we're planning zoning meeting right here.
Okay, um, the HADC kind of brought this up, asking if we had ever considered joint jurisdiction, we did look into this a few years ago. Um, at that time, we didn't move forward with joint jurisdiction, but we established a plating jurisdiction with the county, which means within our growth area, which is laid out in our comp plan, which is that first map I put in your, your packet. Within that area, if any land's gonna be platted there, um, they'll have to come to the city of Harper first, they are approval, and then they can go to the county. But this just affects plating, so if they were gonna plot out some land or replot some land, now how they use that property or what they can build there, what they can do with it, we don't have any voter say so in that. Um, the county's real good to work with us, letting us know if something's going on, if they need a conditional use or areas or whatnot, and asking us for our input. And, you know, we work with them and we tell them if we have any issues or concerns about what's going on out in the county, which is close to us, but we don't have an actual vote to either say yay or nay, or we want this, we don't want this. If we establish a joint jurisdiction, um, that will give us a vote in the say so, what actually can be put up in the counties that surrounds Harper that we, you know, may someday grow into. So the Plating and Zoning Board talked about this at our last meeting, we kinda went through, you know, what it takes, you know, what a joint jurisdiction is and, and what it takes to get one set up. Um, the new board, basically, to set up a joint jurisdiction, we'd have to first get approval from, um, the city commissioner to move ahead with it. Our first step after that then is gonna be, we have to update our comprehensive plan, there's certain parts of the plan that need to be updated and need to be added, so the P and Z board will have to update that. Then we submit that to the county, if they're still good with it, we move ahead and then we would be working with them, we'd sit down and actually, um, figure out where our joint jurisdiction area is gonna be. State law allows us to go up to six miles out, um, there are certain caveats that, you know, you can't be further than equal distance between two cities, and we can't cross another joint jurisdiction, and stuff like that. So we'd have to look at the map and, and see what allowed, but, you know, we look at the map, decide between, you know, the city and the county, where we want that area to be, and then we sit down and actually come up with a set of rules and regulations. So, um, just like we have residential zoning here within the city that says what you can do, what you can't, we'll need a conditional use permit, those regulations would have to be set up for the joint jurisdiction that says these are permitted uses, these need a conditional use, and here's what your setbacks are gonna be. We didn't need a whole set of regulations for this district, so provided we go through all that, and this, this will take a process, it's probably take a year or a process to do all that, but we work with them, get all that set up, and then, um, we have to pass it as a city, an ordinance to pass it, and the county also has to pass and approve it, we have to have public hearings, so we'll, you know, people within this joint jurisdiction, I'll, can also come in and put their input in it, um, we can take that into consideration. But provided everything passes, we get it set up with them, then basically anything that wants to build within our joint area will need to come to both the city and the county. We would have joint meetings with them, and then it gives the city a vote and the county a vote as far as can they do this or can they not do this. And the pros for the city, you know, is that we are a growing city, so, you know, we're going out and we will encompass some of this land that's gonna be out there, so, you know, we don't wanna hog confinement, you know, coming up a quarter mile from town, because that might be in town someday, you know, so where we might, you know, have just, you know, our input right now, we can actually have a vote to say that goes there and that goes there. Um, so it's a benefit to the city, um, you might get opposition from the surrounding landlords, 'cause it puts rules, more rules and regulations on them, but, you know, all in all for the city, um, it, it's a, uh, you know, it's a benefit to us, it's a pro for us. And, and I think the HADC and both the Plating and Zoning Board, you agree, this is something we should look into and start pursuing, so. It's up to the city council though, if they want to pursue it, then I would go back with the Plating and Zoning Board, make that contact with the county and then have them start working on this, so.
So you need a motion right now?
I don't know if I need a motion to do it, um, yeah, I mean, you can have a motion to say we can start pursuing a joint jurisdiction, but then.
I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with joint jurisdiction with Minnehaw County as written.
I'll second that.
I have a question. What do you think it would cost the city to, you know, implement this process, you know, with extra P and Z?
I just said, there's, so, once it all gets set up, there's gonna be extra meetings for the Plating and Zoning Board, because, um, right now, Supal's has it set up and Del Rapids has it set up with the county. Crooks is working on it, it's not established yet, but, so anytime like a conditional use would come around or a variance hearing we needed, I mean, same things that happen here in the city, but if it's in this joint jurisdiction area, that, um, those two groups will have to meet, have a joint meeting and meet and decide upon this. I did talk with Justin, the city administrator in Del Rapids, he says for them, you know, and they're going to need to, it's probably an extra five, six meetings a year. He says it hasn't been a whole lot, you know, of course, it all just depends on what develops and comes before, but, you know, it hasn't been a lot of commitment. He did say, which I like this part, is that the county usually administers all the paperwork, so since it is within the county, um, they go fill out all the applications with the county. The county would, you know, review them, do the groundwork of it, send out all the notices, and, you know, they do all the administering, so, you know, they take care of that.
Old P and Z board has to go to that meeting?
I, yeah, yeah, it's all our board, all their work.
We cancel about five or six meetings a year from P and Z because of lack of agenda, too, correct?
Yeah, there, yeah, there's always a few meetings that get canceled just because of the hard agenda, probably be pretty full if we move forward.
So effectively maybe a wash with the P and Z board, but your costs, your time for doing this may be an additional, I mean, obviously because of your salary, but how's it gonna impact your workload?
Well, Adam, sorry, I missed the last part, which is.
How's it, how is, how is this gonna impact, how much of a time commitment are you gonna have?
I think, I think most of the, you know, um, time of setting it up is gonna be handled at our regular P and Z meetings, so, you know, they're coming to a P and Z meeting. So, you know, updating the comp plan's all gonna be done within a P and Z meeting, that we would be paying our members to go to P and Z to go to anyway, you know, um, the extra meetings, the meeting with the county, you know, I, I don't know, I haven't gone through the process before. I will tell you though, CCOG has offered their help in implementing this, so they can do a lot of the groundwork too. Um, like I said, Dells already has this set up, so we have a sample ordinance, uh, of rules and regulations that can kind of be our guideline for it, so, you know, I think it should be, you know, not too cumbersome, I guess, you know, like I said, we can kind of work off them, kind of tweak it how it really worked for us, and I think most can get done during the P and Z meetings.
I'm gonna have a comment. Having come from P and Z and getting, you know, we, we do get hate and fight, uh, stuff from the county, but literally you feel like, especially anything that happens south of Interstate, you get no say in that. So this is the way for us to have a say in, in that, which is the, you know, the thing that's the most obvious, um, but there's always stuff within a two mile buffer of, of our city that we're really at the mercy of the county. Hopefully they take our opinion, and at least this gives us a vote, so I'm in favor of this as well.
Yeah, and at the P and Z meeting, probably can kind of attest to this as well, it seemed like there's, we're not giving up anything to get this vote, other than the work involved in the year of setting it up. It doesn't seem like we're giving anything else up, so I really don't see, we're winning on the other side of it, I don't see the loss on the side of it, so, yeah. All right, we got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Can I vote? Moore?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, next, and Aja, up the presentation.
Presentation on the city website, um, this is something that we talked about late last year, after, uh, after being out at South County Municipal League. Aja had a chance to talk with, uh, folks at host.org dot com website and show us a little bit about what's out there and what's available, and so I don't wanna take any, uh, much of this away from Aja, but she's done a lot of work on this at, kind of, to call and be able to see like what's out there, what's available for us, so, but I'll let you take it.
Okay, actually, if you could pull out what, um, was put in your packet, um, I'll probably fold a little bit along with that, so you can follow along as to what options that there are and, um, so you can see, you gotta do that. Um, I'll start out here, this is our homepage as of right now, um, this is our website, um, just so you're aware, um, uh, this is actually a free template. Um, we did not pay to have that template put together, um, there is a manual service charge. There is a annual service charge, which is, I would, you know, put it like, like an IT service, basically, from the gov office, and then that is $450 a year currently. That actually would not change. It doesn't matter what package you have, whether you have a free template, or whether they do the ultimate custom, you know, website for you, the actual fee for the annual service does not change with any of these packages, so keep that in mind. The first one that I'd like to show you, I'm gonna show you one from, basically, each of the packages that they offer, so that you can kinda get an idea of what they offer. One I'm gonna start out with is Belpheus. The reason I'm starting out with this one is because this is actually the top-of-the-line custom. They pretty much paid over $6,000 for this. This is pretty much every option that they offer, so that's kinda why I'm showing it to you, not that we need to do it, but that they have pretty much all the bells and whistles that you could look at. As you can see, pretty much every website that they offer has kind of a background image that you can choose. And with this one, they have quick links, which I'll talk about in a little bit as well. This slider in the middle is actually an extra add-on as well. Just so you're aware, that is $1,000 to add to a website. So, you can add any amount of pictures depending on the different packages that you have, but something like that, where it actually slides in the middle like that, is extra. So, otherwise, I would consider this area on top with these links and stuff like that, where it says Belpheus, that would be more their banner. That would be what would be considered, what they talk about in the package, is their banner. So if you wanna look at the first one that's offered, it's called the Premium Solution. So it's on your second page. It's for $48.95. And if you looked at any of these, these would be familiar, if you looked at any of the ones that I previously gave you, all this of. But I'm gonna go with North Oaks. So this is North Oaks, Minnesota. They went with the Premium Solution. They have a population of 1,800 people, just to kinda give you a perspective. And if you've also seen the branded website, they have the same package. It is a custom package, so it's something that they actually customize at the facility with their IT people. So this is a custom package. It comes with five banners. So their banner is actually this top section right here with these pictures, and then their logo and their name. They're, they do have, as you can see, this sliding thing as well. So that was an add-on, just so you're aware, that does not come with it.
It's $1,000, no matter what.
$1,000, no matter what. Yep. And it looks fairly similar to Belpheus's. As you can see, it kinda has those little dots in the middle, so it's fairly similar as the way that it looks. Also, just so you're aware, this is an add-on that I'll talk about at the end, but these are quick links. You kinda saw that with Belpheus's as well. But quick links is an add-on that would also be something extra on top of the package. But it's something that is convenient for, you know, if you quick-click on it or something like that, goes straight to certain areas, and those are usually something that are, like, most asked often, or, or, where do I find, you know, that kind of thing, something that the regular citizen would, and that's the only thing I need to look for, that's where they would click on it. This does include the background image. Most of theirs do, there's only one that doesn't, so it has the background images, you can see. It also comes with up to 50 photos that you can put on the website. So that's, any of these photos in the slider that you're seeing, any of the photos at the, at the top here with the banners. If you go to maybe a different, no, that's not a good example. Maybe a different page of theirs, you can see their banner changed, and that's, the banners, those four pictures at the top. So they, with their website, they can have up to five different banners with this solution. So you can put up to 50 photos in those. This is the only, this is the only package that actually includes one of the add-ons, which is called the Global Design, which I will also talk about later. But it is actually included in the price of that, it's not considered an add-on in this package. So, the next one I'd wanna talk about, on the next page here, is called the Progressive Solution, which is $24.95. And I'm gonna show you picking South Dakota, not because of the location, but because it's actually very similar in population. They have 3,100 people, it's similar in population to what we have. So you can kinda see what a city our size has done with their website. As you can see, they have the banner in the background with this one. Their, or, excuse me, the background image with this one. They have the option for three banners. What they decided to do with theirs, instead of having four individual pictures, they actually have four pictures that are just melded together, so that's technically four pictures in their banner. And then they, with this package, it includes up to 20 photos, not 50. So there's only 20 photos in this one. The Progressive Solution is actually a stock template. It is not custom, just an FYI. So, basically, if we were to do this, they would put in, we would put in, like, our logo, we would pick a background image, we would have font, you know, capabilities and stuff like that with what we wanna put on there, and then the color scheme itself would change to what color scheme we would like. As you can see from their logo, they have the blues, and then they have these two, it's kind of like an orange and a goldenrod, and they incorporated that in all of their lists here. So when you're clicking on things, it changes colors. And this is also another example, right here, of what quick links can look like. Obviously, it doesn't have to be the buttons, it can be a little bit different, so it's, with it being an add-on, you can be a little bit more customizable with that. So, that's just another example of what that can look like. Okay.
With these quick links, are these the template merging quick links? If we picked this package, would our quick links look like?
I don't believe so, I think because it's an add-on, we can choose what they look like.
Okay.
I think we can do that. So I'm guessing not, because I've seen the quick links on a few of the other pages that are the same, the same Progressive Solution. And I think that they're, they can be different, because they can be customizable because they're an add-on, and they're not part of the original package.
Okay.
So, okay, so if we wanna look at the Value Solution, the Value Solution is $12.95.
I'm more interested in the mobile stuff, so as you go to these, I'm on my phone.
That's awesome that you are, 'cause I'm gonna show you that a little bit.
I never sit down on the PC area.
And I'm gonna bring that up in just a minute, too, so, thank you. The Value Solution is $12.95. This is also a stock, not custom, you know, template. It includes only one banner, so if you go across the board with any of their links on here at the top that you're clicking on, you'll see the same banner at the top. So you will see City Gregory, South Dakota, and it's gonna have that picture. That's what it's gonna look like. They have the background image, which is offered with this package as well, but you can only do up to eight photos on this one, so it's a little bit more limited. They also added quick links to this one, as you can see. That's what that scrolling banner is, so another option for what quick links can look like. It looks like you can really customize that to what it, what it, what it is you want to look like and for your city, so. And then the last one that we're gonna look at is the Budget Solution. The Budget Solution is $5.95, and we'll look at... So this is the Budget Solution. As you can see, this is the only solution that does not have a background image. So it's just a plain color in the background. It includes only one banner and eight photos. So it's basically the basic of the basic that you can get. But as you can see, this is, this is kind of what you would get. So the banner is more at the top, with the pictures and the, and the logo and stuff. But you're still getting the logo on every one of your websites, that's included on all of them, and separate fonts and stuff as well. Now, there are two add-ons that I wanted to discuss. Kinda mentioned, I'm one of them, is the quick links. So I did point that out on a bunch of them, that you saw here, and how customizable those can be. But also, I did wanna point out the mobile app. This one is from the Progressive Solution, please, yep. This one's from the Progressive Solution. This is my hometown of Vermin, Minnesota, if you can see it here. It is actually, it's got the logo at the top, and it's got their color scheme. And then if you scroll, it has their homepage, it has pictures, and it even has, like, their specific font that they went with on their regular website. And then goes all the way to the bottom like that. If you look at, if you look at Hartford, we also have this option, but it is the free template option. So you can look at it on your phone. But as you can see, there is absolutely no color, there's no font pick, you know, at all. There's no logo or anything, and it's all the ones. There's no pictures. The only thing that you see are the links that we put on there for the pay your bill online and stuff like that. There's nothing out there. So, that's kinda the difference between what a free template looks like on your mobile versus what it looks like if you had the upgrade. The upgrade for both of those is $500 each. The custom mobiles is $500, and the quick links is $500. So those are the two costs of those add-ons specifically. The last thing I wanted to point out is that they have a multi-year payment plan option. And the reason I wanted to point that out is that I don't think you, you know, make the city go broke by picking any of these solutions, they're fairly reasonably priced. But you can put them out over a period of two years or three years. They have these two options here. The one benefit to doing that, besides having it budgeted out for a few years, is that they also lock in your rate for the yearly annual fee. So that actually can be increased every year if they wanted to, a couple percent, you know, for inflation and that kind of thing. This, with the three-year agreement, would lock it in at six years. With the two-year agreement, would lock it in at four years. So you would specifically be paying the $4.50 that we're paying now for that period of time that we locked it in before the rates went up. So that would be the benefit on top of paying, you know, for time to actually keep your costs at, you know, the regular rate that we got right now, so. All right, any questions?
Where do you find the annual?
Sure, it's on the second-to-last page. It says Gov Office Multi-Year Payment, at the very bottom. And it says what are your options, and there's the two-year option and the free option.
And so... If we did the Progressive Solution, we're gonna sell the plan. $24.95, $24.95 per year?
No, it's $24.95 for them to set up and design our website.
First-time fee?
First-time fee.
And then yearly fee?
The yearly fee is the $4.50.
$4.50, that's what I was looking for.
And we're paying the $4.50 right now?
That's what we're at right now. That's, that's what we pay on an annual basis right now for it. And that's regardless of changing anything. So we pay for that already, the way our free template is. So even if we upgraded to the Belpheus Custom Cadillac, we'd still be paying more $50.
Of course, gotta compare it to what I pay for my monthly, on my website, so $4.50 is reasonable.
That's a yearly fee?
Hmm?
That's a yearly fee?
That's a yearly fee, it's kinda like their IT services.
What drives the content on the site?
Huh?
What drives the content we put on the site, regardless of what?
We, I say, we can put on whatever we want.
We can put whatever pictures we want.
We can set up whatever tabs we want.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can put up whatever pictures, we can, we provide the logo, we provide the color schemes. If you look at, it's, not the second-to-last page, the page right before that one that I pointed out to Travis, actually, it's right before that. So it's right in the middle. It's kinda this spreadsheet, it kinda gives you an idea of what user is going to do in certain packages. It has on there... Totally lost my train of thought.
Goes through, talks a little bit about what you can change over here?
What you can change, what you can't change. No, that's not what I was looking for, that's why. So my train of thought, just, sorry. Basically, it's how many drafts, does it say?
It does.
It does. The top one, see? Okay, so the top one, it shows how many drafts that you can have, so that, depending on which, you know, package you pick, it would be kind of a meeting between, you know, me and them as far as, okay, this is what we'd like, we want, this logo we want, this color we want, this picture we want, put it together for me. So they put it together, and they, and then they come back and say, okay, what do you think of this? And then I can say, you know, depending on how many drafts were allowed in whatever package it is, it basically, I can go back and say, well, I like that, but can we change this thing to do X, Y, and Z? You know, and so this gives you an option of how many drafts they can do for you in that first one.
And once it's all built?
Mm-hmm.
You're responsible for turning information into the calendar?
I already am.
You're already doing that?
Already doing that.
You're responsible if the rates go up on the sewer and water, you make those changes on there?
Yep, I upload all the ordinances, I upload, she uploads print, I upload minutes, we put calendar, we already do all that.
Yeah, we control the content.
Yeah.
You get Meppleson down, you wanna put a picture of that up there, you can do that.
Yep. Yep, we're not paying someone extra to sit and do content, stuff like that. That's something that's already built into my job description.
So it's $4.50 maintenance, what's that give us?
It gives, basically, their IT services, if we have an issue or a problem, it's wholesale, just like, it's like wholesale.
Somebody hacks into it and...
Right.
Monkeys at all.
Or if I have a question here, I'd like to put this photo here, but it's not working, can you help me with that kind of thing?
Okay, okay.
Kind of like a customer service line access.
Sure, sure.
Okay, you done, Travis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I went through this a couple, four or five times myself, of working and stuff, and we went back to Terry and Chamber of Commerce and AGDC. First off, I assume the domain remained, make these answers short today, quite a few. Will the domain remain the same?
Yes.
Thank you. Analytics available on each page?
Any what?
Any analytics available on each page?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Basically, you...
We can get analyzed, how many people, we know how many people visit the site.
Oh, stats, okay, yes.
Okay, that is available, with $4.50 and so on.
It's, yeah, it's already out to us, yeah.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Let's see that sometime. Would, is it, the program that you're using, is that you'd use with any one of these options, is it the same that you're using now?
Yes.
Which is WordPress?
Gov Office. It's, yeah, it's Gov Office.
So it's Gov Office, that is the format?
Yep, the format that I already currently use will be, you know, the same as what this would be, it would just be, you know, there would just be more options.
Do you anticipate needing to or wanting to, I was with Jesse in regards to some of the content with this?
I'm, I would give his input.
Sure.
Because, I mean, he, with, as well as with other city staff, I actually talked with them earlier today, and they gave us some input, too. So, to just kind of make sure that all of the different elements of everyone's job is included in that. But yeah, with him being the economic development director, I would assume that he would want some input in us.
And do you have access to copious-minded pictures that you can alternate in and out?
Yes.
You do?
We do.
That's surprising, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, great.
Actually, Teresa, what was it, what was her name?
Margaret Pennack, you know, did all the pictures, we have a copy of that.
You got a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, 'cause I said that was one of my sources, we had another one when I was marketing here that has some others which I can share with you, so.
That'd be yours?
All right, well, I'll just go through.
I guess with pictures on them, so I think coming up with the pictures isn't an issue, you know.
That's correct.
There's one or two we wanna update, we certainly can.
And, and it's something that was mentioned to me as well, is if, you know, if we wanted to, let's say on this banner that you're looking at, if we wanted to make this more themed towards the season, or the time of the year, so in the wager, I put more imagery pictures up, and then in the summer, I put up more summery pictures, I could use that up.
All right, we'll just get over there, go quick, like, I'll say for a fact, Travis kind of alluded to, too, that this is extremely competitive as far as rates go, and, you know, which one we decide is still, I think, a pretty good deal. I know we need to go to the 6K, but...
I, I wouldn't suggest that, if that's what you're gonna ask.
That might be a little on the top, but the only other thing I'd like to add is that without a doubt, I would advise this council to ensure that we have mobile design. That is a trend that is going off the blue as far as... Uh, that is a trend that is, 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 is going off the blue as far as, matter of fact, some people watch TV on their cell phones now. On that, a couple of weeks ago on another survey, uh, that, yes, really.
Yes.
To the point where, uh, that, that we, you know, whatever we pick, I strongly, I strongly suggest that we go on mobile design no matter what.
And, and, and I agree with that, and that was one of the reasons I brought it up, is because we do have, you know, as, as we're growing, we're bringing in a lot of new, younger families and the majority of them are actually looking more at their phones than they are an actual laptop or PC. That's actually more common, so for us to have our branding and logo and kind of colors theme, it just, it, it, it gives a better feel for our city.
I'm done, what do you think we should do, which one do you like?
If, if I was to make the decision, I would go with the progressive solution. Um, it is um, a stock, um, look, but honestly, I think we don't need, we don't need to spend the six thousand dollars, I don't think that's needed. Um, and I think that would give us enough to get started on um, upgrading from where we're at. Um, it gives us the twenty photos, three banners, that kind of stuff, I also would add on the custom mobile links and the quick links, so the total cost I would suggest is the thirty-four ninety-five.
If we want to go from the progressive solution to the premium solution in five years.
Mm-hmm.
Is it five thousand dollars at that point in time?
I believe so.
Hidden skin for the whole design.
That's my only concern is we're, we're growing.
Yep.
And.
I'm not sure if they give you a discounted rate because you're starting kind of, you're getting, you're going from a stock template to a custom template, so I don't think so. I, I mean, don't poke me on that, I can double check.
No, and I agree, and.
But I think that, that you would get charged that, however, within five years, you would be also still under that six-year plan if you were doing the three-year payment plan. And so you would be able to re-lock yourself in and.
I, I don't think progressive solution is, is the, the wrong answer here, I'm just saying that, uh, the free loop solution might sync up in some eyes and might sync up better with what the chamber has done. Um, with their, with their website.
And with that one, that one does include the, um, the custom mobile already, so they only have, maybe you would have to add to that, but I would suggest is the custom, or the quick links. So you'd only add five hundred to that one, not a thousand.
So we're paying essentially two grand more. A little less than two grand more, getting a little bit more.
Yep, you're getting fifty photos instead of twenty, you're getting the mobile design already included, you're getting um, five banners instead of three, and it's a custom design, you have a total design, which is the basic differences between the two.
I mean, I. I guess having towards that, you get a little bit more, but um. Like I said, the progressive solution's not a, not a. Not a loser here. Um, but I think that, that premium solution will sync up well with what the chamber's doing.
How many hits do we get right now?
I don't know the answer to that, I didn't look that up.
Teresa, do you know how many hits do we get a month?
I can tell you right off.
Can anybody find me that number quickly?
You get thirty, because I, it pops up every time I open up my computer.
So we're on sixty, because I hit it once a day, so we've got sixty right there. I'm, I'm just curious.
I don't know, where, where are we, can we look that up?
If I can give my two cents.
Yeah.
Is there anything that makes us have to do business with this company?
No, there's nothing that makes, makes us have to do it with this company, um, other than we, uh, looked into it, how many years ago?
We looked into changing websites about five years ago, maybe, did some, we stayed with this at that time.
Because it was the best um, option and they do, they do a lot of their business with cities. I mean, that's, that's kind of their niche.
Where I'm going with this is. What do they do that actually helps promote. The city of Hartford makes us more noticeable, helps market the city of Hartford, like. Get our mission and our goals actually out there, because I know there's companies out there that help businesses. Market their business as well as develop a website based on that business's goals, right? Um. So that would be my thought is, how can we blend the two together to make our website more powerful or more useful, rather than just, we have parks, great, you know, like everybody else.
Sure.
You know, and where we can blend in Chamber or Economic Development searches maybe with it and stuff like that, I mean. Could be more information, I guess, for me, I would like to see you look at, and actually spend about the same amount of money and get some marketing power, do you think?
So for another company?
Like, I agree, I, I mean, the, the marketing piece, we need something to drive the, the clicks there, I mean, to get us, the amount of clicks that are coming right now really tells us nothing, because. It doesn't, I mean, it's, there's nothing that's on there really right now, I mean, if we drive people there.
Those businesses will design a nice website for ten grand, right, four, three.
I haven't seen those, but.
Well, they are, I, I mean.
My, mine was, uh, mine was a little bit more expensive than this, but, so. I'm, uh, I'm good with these numbers, but then the marketing aspect, I see, you know. I see as a huge, huge plus, I mean, I can see that too, but.
So. And I, you know, one of the things I would like to say on this, I think, is. I don't know how far we're going to get as a council, that we, if we're in the mix of it, the whole, with the whole piece, right? You know, so I'm, what I'd be interested in seeing is, is if the council is interested in putting a number out there. And, and a group, you know, whether it's Audrey, Teresa, Jesse, maybe important from AGDC and Chamber, to say, here's a, here's a dollar a month, and here's a group. Go do it, and, and, and run with it, or make your best decision you can within that dollar a month. Um, it's like not positive, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't want to belittle it in any way, but I don't know that we want to come back meeting after meeting, talking about details of the website.
Yeah, that will happen, that will happen.
Yeah, and those will be Monday, definitely, those will be.
I'd like to give some, give some rain out there and say, here's, here's a brand version, um, do what you think.
Yeah, because I know that in the past, they said, I was kind of surprised the, uh, the, the, the number of drafts were as low as they are, because, uh. I've never been able to affiliate with a web redesign that's been more, less than five, you know, so.
I agree with that too.
Well, if you have too many hands in the pot, yes, I can understand that, so.
Takes some strong direction.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I have, uh. This is a way out there question.
Oh boy.
Probably not feasible at all, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, because all I know is what I do in my own personal life.
She's scared.
Oh boy.
If I'm traveling. I Google the name of the city I'm going to, Bakersfield. And that is how I perceive where I'm going. So here's my question, I don't think anybody's gonna make Hartford a destination. I don't know why they would, but I would bet people make Sioux Falls a destination. So what would be the likelihood? Of having Hartford linked to Sioux Falls website?
Well, you, are you saying from?
Not, not linked on this end, linked on Sioux Falls end.
Or linked to our website.
Because if, if there's somebody traveling from.
This.
Wichita, coming up to Sioux Falls. They're gonna go on Sioux Falls' website, and I think it'd be more beneficial to have a Hartford link on Sioux Falls' website.
But what Sioux Falls website do you want to be on, Mark?
I don't know, I don't ever Google Sioux Falls, because I know what's there.
Can I, can I note on that, just?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
This, this'll, this'll go back to Mark's, marketing, marketing part here, is, and I, this is, this is so far over my head and I do it every day with my pictures on my website and stuff. Is there's so many back-end things on the website that you put, and, and coding and different things. When I upload a picture of, of, of something that I, a product. I can put anything in that description, and sometimes I'll put Hartford or whatever, and that will key a search of some sort, so. So essentially, it comes back to the administrator of, of the, the, uh, the website to put those keywords in. So you've got this Hartford website, and then she, uh, um, Audrey can put in, in the back coding, or our marketing company can put in in the back end Sioux Falls, or Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
See now, I don't, I don't want to accuse you of talking down to me now, Ryan.
No, no, no.
No, I'm assuming there is something there, I don't actually do that.
Uh, well, and I, I wouldn't imagine you would, because this is so.
It is actually something that's built into, I, I do coding in college, so I'm.
So, so here's the million dollar question then.
This is so, but, this is above my head too.
If, if it, if it truly is coding, can we put in, can we put in terms, Denny Sanford Premier Center? Pentagon, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
On our website, we can put like.
Absolutely.
Just, just so if people are Googling.
Absolutely.
Something in Sioux Falls, we show up.
As well.
On the first or second page.
They scroll down far before their, that's what you're saying. It's called website optimization.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep, exactly.
Google Big Plastic Tank. Well, our website's concept sales, we, we have, the company that designed ours put in a lot of the, I mean, we get calls. From all over the country, because we come up toward the top of the list.
And there is some stuff that we can look into with that, I mean, it's a program that I use to, to upload things and stuff, it's not the actual code that I'm putting in there when I'm uploading things and stuff like that. Like I said, I've dealt with code in the past, it's been a few years, but, um, so I know what you're talking about, but I'd have to talk with their IT services that we have to see. What is embedded in there and if I have access to it to, to add things, or if it's something they have to add on their end, but that's something they can probably.
Because some of it comes up and you type in, say, city of Sioux Falls, you look over at the site, side, and it says, other sites you may want to look at. City of Hartford, city of Hairsburg, because they've all have some sort of a tie, connection to that initial website.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that if we, if we spend this money to do this, well, number one, I want to know how many people are hitting ours. Because if we're getting three hits a month. What are we, what are we talking about?
Well, I'm kind of.
Secondly, I just want to make sure that if somebody Googles or Bing's or whatever they do. I'm hip with LinkedIn. I, I just, I just want to make sure that if people are Googling something in the greater Sioux Falls region, that we have an opportunity to pop up, yeah, so. And I don't, I, I agree with you, and I don't think you have. I don't think we need to worry about too much about the hits, it would be interesting to know what the hits are, but I also think we gotta think of it as, that's our, this is our front door. It's the only front door we have.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but.
I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at twenty-five hundred bucks plus five hundred for the. Buttons and five hundred for the mobiles, that's thirty-five hundred bucks. Or if we ratchet it up a step or two, then we're at fifty-five hundred bucks. And that's a lot of money for three hits a month.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Hits are important, I understand that, and I can look that up for you and get back to you on that, um, but I think I, I was thinking of this more as a. Um, with our city growing and with the, the demographic that we have of who is coming in here with our, with our, um. Um, what is it, the, what's it called, the income base, or what would you call it?
Demographic.
Average household income.
Well, average household income, thank you. Um, that, I think that that needs to reflect on our website, because if someone's looking to build here, move here, work here. They're looking at your website to see what's there.
Can I, I would, uh, I would really like to hear Dan's opinion on this.
I don't care, I mean.
Come on, come on up.
Come on up.
Just, just for the simple fact that you are currently the youngest woman in the room. And, and probably know more about. The, the interweb than all of us put together.
The millennial generation.
Interweb.
So, I mean, I do have a smartphone in my pocket and I was Googling.
Well, I got one on the table, that, that doesn't make me a genius.
So while she was talking about this, like, looking things up, but like.
What's, what's your opinion?
The platform, this GovOffice thing is nice, especially for them, I think, just because, like what you guys were talking about earlier, that four hundred fifty dollars a year, that. Whatever, thirty bucks a month, that administrative fee covers their content management system too, which, that makes it easy for them to update it, which is kind of one of the most important things about your website, I think. I don't want to be rude, but the website sucks right now. I mean, I think it looks bad.
Don't hold back, tell us what you're looking for.
Yeah, sugarcoat it just above.
It's free, remember?
Right, exactly, I mean, right, exactly, so the design was free, and, and I definitely think you guys need to explore something, you know, or redesign to make it look better, um, but. I can see how, you know, a platform like GovOffice or one of its competitors, I don't, I don't know what, I know a lot of communities in South Dakota are using the same thing. I think GovOffice is based on.
But, but typically, I don't see people living in town visiting this website.
Sure, and I can.
So, so how do you, how do you get, so how do you get people to hit that website that number one, aren't looking for a job? And number two, I mean, I don't get it.
Pay your bills online.
By the way, you can pay your bills online, and anybody who calls in, we say, well, on the website, if you look at this page, this is where you will find. And that's actually where we put a lot of forms for a lot of our, um, for like jamboree and, you know, and some of that for people.
But, we're not, we're not looking at rebuilding the website so people can pay their bills easier.
No, but you were saying that people in town don't look at it, that's not true.
I'm not saying they don't look at it, but, but those people are already in town.
Sure.
We're, I thought the point of this was to gear it towards people out of town.
I think it's geared.
People in town don't need fifty pictures, because all they gotta do is drive around.
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, because is word of mouth the best advertising that you can have, and if somebody lives in Hartford and they want their friends or members or whatever to come to this area, this is where the show fits from.
I, I just want to throw in one thing here, like, obviously, yes, the website needs redesigned, it should look better, but I think one of the most important things for me, and hopefully a lot of, of people, people who are looking at websites like this. If they're stumbling onto the city website, I think one of the most important things is that when you get there, it looks like it's been updated in the last twenty-four hours. I think regular updates of, of new stuff, calendars, events, that kind of stuff. Um, probably links to city social media or something like that would be important, but I like, I like that you guys mentioned that marketing's kind of important too, you need to look at it on that side of things too.
Did you say city social media?
That's correct, we do have city social media.
I believe Audrey's worked on that.
Remember?
When was the last time you posted on Facebook?
Um, a week ago.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I forgot, yeah.
Audrey's, um, you don't get on that, yeah.
I can see, like, the City Hartford Facebook page or whatever, I think I see that more often than I see the website.
Right.
And then she can link the, the page right into the. The other way we can use a website as a channel, our city employees.
You know, I think that this is probably the discussion I was meaning to avoid.
Yeah.
I, I really think, I mean, it's good, that's to understand what's going on with it, but I also, if we try to control this, it's gonna be, this isn't gonna be good. I'm not trying to control. What I'm looking for, no, I know you're not, but I think that we're gonna keep getting the same questions. And what I would be interested in is, do we have a motion to give them some direction, move forward?
I made the motion, we budget four thousand dollars to, towards a new city website. Four thousand dollars.
Would that include A, input with AGDC in order to? Or not? Courtesy, where do you have your own?
They have their own.
They have their own websites.
Uh, maybe as a courtesy, but not as an requirement.
Oh, absolutely, no, second.
Discussion?
Four thousand, that's gonna be just to.
I think when he's going towards his, third of progressive with the two F's, is what.
Yep, and that's fine, just to do the website, talk about marketing and different. Yep, and that's right, just to do the website, talk about marketing at a different, maybe a different point in time.
Can I ask one question before you vote on this, is this gonna be with one of their payment plans or is this gonna be upfront? Or is that a?
To me, all I heard was a dollar amount to budget.
Yep.
I think if you went with Randall's Computer Service to set up the site, it's in the budget, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think it's direction.
Got it.
Correct me if I'm wrong in your motion, but it's.
I think we got enough money in reserve, if we want to make.
Yeah, they don't need to make a payment.
I'm a let's pay before we move on, kind of guy.
Nice to keep it in the same budget year, I, I was, what I was saying, but, you know, keep it all in the same budget year.
It, the motion was, um, from Keel to allow $4,000 to be budgeted to upgrade the websites, and that's the second. And that was all that was specified.
I have the same concerns you do, uh, with the marketing and the hits and analytics and all that stuff, but we can't get someone's answers if you don't kind of release the answers here.
We get it going, get this ball rolling.
I agree.
Come back.
So, if they can do what they want, or do they need to come back and tell us what they're doing and we need to prove?
Well, if you're budgeting it, you can't, you, I don't know, how's that work?
In budgeting, basically the money's there, we can spend it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
A lot of time to come back to you though, I just let you.
Just so you know, I, when I did.
I mean, it was like the payler, you, you budgeted, but Craig let you know. I'm buying the.
That is, that is what I assumed, I want to make sure that everything's correct, because at this point in the game, I personally would like to see proposals, like, you know, what can this, this company do versus another company? And, and get a feel, you guys think, or you better, you guys interview two people, talk to them about marketing, what they can do, stuff like that, you heard our concerns.
Hmm.
Yes, so with, with my motion.
You amending it?
I'm not gonna amend it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say that if there's concern on this council or if, if somebody wants to provide further direction, I'm basically saying, I feel like we've hired some competent individuals here, I like what I've seen here, I'm gonna let them, let's move on. We've got a $4 million role that in my opinion is a higher priority than a $4,000 website.
I'm gonna expand on that just for a second, uh, the Chamber of Commerce hired a group very similar to this, if not the same one, that specializes in Chamber of Commerce websites, they do it every day, you drive the milk truck every day, you go and you sell plastic every day, and so on down the line, they are first in it from top to bottom, um, and, um, although the marketing analysis is important, um, you know, as far as getting it on top of Google, um, I think all we have to do is stress to that, to them, to add that into the code, everywhere from Economic Development to, you know,
Sioux Falls.
You know, Sioux Falls, and it'll be there. One other thing that I want to add, and that is a meeting that I attended a year and a half ago with the Economic Development Director for the GEOD, Pat Costello, at Hammond's, were you there for that, Ryan? Um, and he said, and I remember it specifically, namely when it comes to, it didn't really matter, residential or business, 95% of any one of those two genres will go to a website first before they even make it, the first call, the phone call or anything, 95%. So, so, you know, the time is now, and I think, uh, 4K is a solid number, and I'd be, like I say, these rates are very, very, um, very competitive, um, and I, I think they work on volume, uh, really, because, uh, I think that the Chamber's spending quite a bit more than what we're pushing today.
All right.
Yes.
Montague?
Based on Mr. Renner's testimony, I'm going to vote yes.
Ford? Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman? Yep. All right, thank you for your work on that, Aga.
Yep.
That's great.
All right, visitors?
All right, correspondence?
I think I didn't thank you last meeting.
I did have a piece of correspondence in my packet, uh, City of Hartford, thank you for the Christmas gift, cash, and for the raise, I appreciate the opportunity to work for the City of Hartford, and having a great boss like Theresa makes it even better. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
And.
You forgot we had them.
Sounds nice.
Did you put him up for that?
No.
It was sealed up by my.
Yeah.
I thought Craig was his boss.
This is Jesse's boss. This is Jesse.
Wrong, Jesse.
Okay, I double checked on that one too, so I was figured out. My job got easier. I was lost there too, I'm like, we might not have a Jesse that works here next week.
All right. Anything else for correspondence, any thank yous? No, I can't think of one, few things that have come up.
First, we have to make sure.
You look, you look for a suggestion for a thank you?
If you have one, I'll take it, otherwise I can.
You know what, I, I got an idea, I got an idea, just popped into my head.
Nope.
Why don't we send one to Justin and I for investment in this family?
That's a good idea.
Very good idea.
I agree with that.
Well, I don't want to leave out his boy, Robert.
Yeah.
Start there.
Yeah.
We might start with say, Robert and Justin.
We need.
Uh-oh, which one?
How about the ice, how about that?
For ice.
Yeah.
How about that?
Good. Sounds good.
Sorry for my.
You gonna write that?
For the, for their.
For investing.
Investing in it, thank you.
You want us all to sign one quick?
I got a card here, Montague, you'll be signing a passport.
A card, I'll sign it, we can write it for you.
I only, I'm only, I don't normally sign blank cards.
I want Montague to write it. You will.
All right.
Yeah, geez, I'll have a can.
All right. If nothing else?
I would just like to say thanks too for the raises on behalf of, I'll speak to my guys too, but thank you guys, I just appreciate it, so.
Thank you too.
Thank you for the bonus.
Well.
I got my notes here.
I, I will say, uh, I want to note that Jesse started that ball rolling, and you all fell into line.
I got my notes.
Actually, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
All in favor?
I, I oppose.